Good evening. I'd like to call a meeting back to order. Previously, we were in closed session to discuss employment. And we are now reconvening into open session. And I would ask all of those that can stand and are able to please stand and then join me in a bunch of allegiance. I'd like to wish this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda items for tonight. And that was April and myself. And April, I'll let you go ahead and make that motion if you think that that's appropriate.
I would move to approve consent agenda. Everything looked good.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to the administrative and committee department reports.
Okay, start off at the high school. Our band this past weekend finished up their kind of summer marching season. They've had parades in Columbia Heights, River Falls, and Spooner. We've had a number of basketball and wrestling camps going on here the last couple of weeks. High school leadership crews been working on some schedule tweaks here for next year. And then if you look at the courtyard area between the high school and the stadium, there's some finishing landscaping projects going on, trying to get that beautified and ready for the fall sports season. So they're kind of working on that as we speak. Upcoming events, we've got our three new math teachers doing some professional development related to a program called Mathematic. It's a program we're using for curriculum purposes this year. We've got crisis prevention training coming up here in the next couple of weeks, as well as school safety walkthroughs with the home rate police department. And if you guys can believe it, if you saw it, we had some fall football summer camp going on out on the football field, which means we are two weeks away from the start of fall sports.
It's the most wonderful time of the year. Football. The mathematic professional development for the math teachers. Josh, how is that being administered? Can you walk us through that a little bit?
It's all remote. It's a nationwide curriculum. So there's certain time slots where they log into and receive training and groups of fifteen to twenty other online learners probably.
Okay.
All right. At the middle school, we are halfway through summer school. Had the first three weeks finishing up in June. I want to thank the teachers who worked really hard. And of course, the students and parents for getting them there. The students were great. I had a lot of cooperation and didn't have, we did have a lot of issues, which was amazing. But really have to thank Laura Shorin, who just pours her heart into that and does an amazing job at summer school and has for a long time. And we're in good hands with Laura running summer school for the district. We have EduClimber training coming up here in July 31st and August 7th. EduClimber is a software tool that helps analyze and store data and then also report data. It's going to be a big game changer in a lot of things that we do. I don't want to see all your thunders. But over to Jess to cover it a little bit more. But we're excited to get the first rounds of training in. We're bringing in the trainer type of model where we have a team of people from each building. But every single staff member in the district will go through the training. A lot of them will be doing it from home digitally, but they'll go through the initial training and we kick that off. And we'll implement it slowly over time. There's a lot there, so we'll start and move forward. We're finalizing schedules right now in the middle school as well and putting on some final tweaks so we can get ready to do our plans for open house and orientation. So believe it or not, our orientation's coming up August 26th. I know, I think we have, obviously we have a work in between then, but we can cover a little bit more about that. So you know, upcoming events, I listed just most of the back to school things. So but again, for parents, the sixth grade orientation's August 26th. We'll be sending out a save the date bright arrow message and then you'll be getting your back to school mailing at the beginning of August.
Rolling around the innery.
Yeah.
All right. Because Tom shared EduClimber is a comprehensive data platform. So what it does is it takes the behavioral pieces, any socioeconomic status, attendance, academic data, and it really rolls it into one. So as an educator, when you pull up this information system to be able to see a kid, you get a whole student glance. And so rather, before, we were navigating several different programs to be able to get a comprehensive picture on this student. And I'm trying to align that to ensure best practices. EduClimber seamlessly does that for us. Someone were talking about kids, our supports, academic behavior. We really have a comprehensive look at a student and how we can best support them. EduClimber plays nice with Power School, which we currently have. And it is also part of a Renaissance platform, which is where all of our FastBridge testing is housed. So what's really great about EduClimber is after we run FastBridge on students and we log into EduClimber, all of that is real time data. That's right there. That's giving you a whole glance at a student and that will make things really seamless for us and ultimately best support our kids the best that we can. The mentor mentee program, I oversee that. And so we are well on our way. Each new teacher here, brand new to our district, gets a mentor that is with them all year long. So part of that is summer hours. So they have summer hours wherever they can talk about curriculum resources, nuts and bolts of the school. They get compensated for that, as does the mentor. And then also that mentor does support them throughout the year as well. They have weekly check-ins, topics that they talk about, they document the conversations. And that is in addition to new teacher essential classes that the administrative team holds for them. So that program is well underway. Every new teacher that's been hired has been assigned a mentor. I'm getting, you know, lots of information that's saying that they are meeting, that they are working on all of that. And then in addition, we also support teachers that change roles within our district. So if you've been a longtime employee of ours, but you change into a different role, you still do get a mentor. It looks a little bit different. It's not as much support. But we do offer a mentor just on the academic piece to ensure that our educators understand, you know, best practices, what their learning strategies in curriculum. So that's well underway. The curriculum adoption process, so we, I brought to you a curriculum this past spring that was purchased on July 1st. Next up will be middle school and high school math. So that process actually started last year. Last fall, I always email out the next department and grade levels and let them know. I touch base with them in the spring and I lay out the timeline for them. So as you could read in my board report, I have met with the administrative team. I've actually met with math teachers. I've communicated with them on what the timeline is. My hope is to be a big resource for them as they're navigating this. So next I will bring that to oversight committee and then I will bring it to you on the board in spring and then we'll make that purchase next July. Act 20 literacy trainings. So in compliance with Act 20, any educator that is instructing our students in ELA and grades K through three has to have a science of reading training. And so as we've either had teacher shift roles or even hiring new teachers on in that food special as well, we do have to provide a science of reading training program. And what we've chosen is top 10 tools. So currently, we have four educators that are completing top 10 tools who will be done by September 1st to ensure that they can instruct students in reading in grades K through three. Upcoming things, we have summer school here in this building. Actually, the next two sessions, D and E, happen here in this building, which I'm excited. I don't like the quiet buildings, so I look forward to kids being here. And then as Tom shared, just our open house and some back to school dates are on there as well.
Chat's going to go back to your, the math, the curriculum for just a little bit and then the math mentor mentee program.
Sure.
Obviously, with the new hires that we've had on at the high school, all pretty new. And how is that mentee program working for them? And what does that look like for them?
So I talk with Josh. So when we, I'll talk with any, you know, building administrator, when a new staff member comes on, I always reach out to them and say, who do you feel like would be a good mentor? Obviously, with three new math teachers, Josh has assigned mentors that will support them, not only in academics, but also just how the high school functions, how the district functions. In addition to the mentor mentee program, Josh and I already talked about how we're going to be using FastBridge at the high school. I will be meeting with the math department within the next couple of weeks and spending some time with them, training on FastBridge in response to intervention reports and how to read the academic piece that is kicked out from FastBridge. So that's how the mentors are assigned. Josh is a big part of that conversation and who's going to best support them as well.
We kick started pretty early with these. We've had them in since the second week of June. So we got about as big of a head start with new teachers as you could possibly get. And their mentors have been in there with them, working on some things. Some of our outgoing teachers were very gracious with their time as well and came in and gave us a little extra bump this summer, especially Emily Amundson was a really big help as she was leaving.
With purchasing a new middle school, high school math curriculum, you know, I will be very hands on with it in making sure that what we're selecting, it's somewhat unfair to ask three new teachers to pick out a seven year math commitment, right?
That's kind of where we're headed with some of us, yes.
Huge purchase, huge fiscal responsibility from us as a district. And again, we're married to it for seven years. So knowing that this is year one for three of them, year one of teaching is hard, is hard in itself, let alone, you know, pick out a new math curriculum that we're going to be committed to. So Josh and I have already talked quite a bit about what we currently have, what do we need. One of the things when we look at the FastBridge assessments, high school students are going to be getting assessed with FastBridge as well, is to look at that data in the fall and in the winter and say, you know, where are our gaps? Making sure that when we purchase a curriculum, we're tailoring it to the gaps that we're seeing currently so we can make sure that we're meeting those. So we'll definitely use the assessments that we have to drive what we should be purchasing.
And they meet as a six, twelve vertical PLC team. And so I'm positive we're going to need to have a lot of leadership from some of the experienced middle school teachers to sit down to and just say, here's what we're doing, here's the curriculum we're using and helping them take a look at what would be the best option for the high school.
Two of our teachers have to have student teaching hours at the middle school. So there's inherent spots where they're already be working with veteran middle school teachers. The really important thing to know is that the mathematic program that we're working with, it is really structured, laid out, organized, lesson 1.1, 1.2, 1.3. It is, it is, is, think back to your high school math textbooks, the way they used to exist. Remember, you could do the odds and look at the back because the answers, like, it is that organized in terms of each lesson in order. So and it also plays it out, you know, by day. We've counted the number of days we have per term, the number of lessons that are there. These are the goal targets of where we want to get to. So it is, it is very organized.
As far as, I guess, just the mentors for our math teachers at the high school, do we have them paired up then with a middle school teacher? I mean, I get that, you know, just a mentor in the high school as far as a high school works, but what about a ma, like an actual math mentor? Do we have that for them?
So we have Sam Bosley with a strong math background. And then we have a number of them that are working with UW River Falls that has, they're kind of the, I would say, the best collegiate math training program around for mentorship. So that helps as well.
Okay. Another resource that's been really helpful, I already have my eyes on the 27, 28 K5 math curriculum adoption, because that'll be a two year process for me, is CISA had sent out a survey to all the CISA 11 schools on what our different districts using, right? We have something that we're using now and we may want to consider purchasing that again, but it's really great to know what our strong districts around us using as well. So that's been really helpful is getting those survey results to know what are our neighbors using for kids. A lot of their clientele in terms of students, the challenges they face and their learning styles will be very similar to ours. So we have that information as well as we navigate the adoption.
Thanks. Any questions for Jess?
Has the mentor program, it sounds like a wonderful program. Has that been going on here for a long time?
How many years has it been down? It's got to be fifteen.
Oh, it was here before I came. So I mean, it's grown and evolved, but we were, we had a various mentorship program 27 years ago when I came. But I think it's, we've increased, it's increased a lot.
More teeth than it now.
Lot more teeth, especially since the PLC movement came into place, the professional learning communities as far as learning and how to analyze data, how to take the FastBridge scores and break them down and go kid by kid, skill by skill, to try and make improvements for each student, all of those types of things. And, you know, as the things change, obviously, the training and the mentorship changes too.
I think it was in the hands of Cheryl Meyer, sort of, almost immediately after her hire. So it's probably thirty years old.
There was once, when I first came, and I think maybe it was about the third or fourth year in, we were running the essential classes, which are like, which we still do, where administrators are teaching courses on specific subjects and we pace them out. And there's still room for growth there. But we had other districts come in saying, how are you doing that? Why are you doing that? And then we did a presentation up at CISA about it for other districts. So it's been around for quite some time.
This past spring, we did a survey with all of our teachers. I sent it out with some pretty pointed questions of how does the mentorship program help you? What are our gaps? What do you need from us? And so when we are meeting as administrative team in the next week or so, a lot of that feedback will drive some changes that we're going to evaluate, right? I mean, new teachers coming in have different skills and different experiences. And so like Tom said, it's something that we're constantly looking at and evolving with, trying to tailor the classes, you know, to what do they need when they're starting their career here with us.
And you kind of see the keys, first of all, they're just trying to get their feet wet and understanding how does a building work? How do you unlock this door? How do you do this? And all these little small things. But the key is to get into what do we do to make kids learn at really high levels? And that's where you're going to want to move them to. It takes time. It's a process.
And I know that all of us in this room know our next person up, but I'm cognizant of the people who are going to be watching at home on cable and on my layer. And so introducing our new elementary.
Not on Dish TV or YouTube.
Dear that light, look. Our new elementary school principal, welcome to Megan Schaller. Tonight is your first night for being here and we welcome you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the wonderful flowers you sent. They were beautiful and smoked lovely on my desk for a long time. Fortunately, they have departed.
Exactly.
But I just want to first of all, give a shout out to the over 25 members of my team who've come in on their personal time in the last two weeks and met with me and sat down, had intentional time, anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour and a half. And we just talked and we got to know who they were, what's important to them, their goals, their aspirations for the school year, how they wanted feedback, how they wanted support, and asked some of these very intentional questions and talked through what makes them unique. And I'm trying to remember every single one of them. But I told them, I said, I took notes on all of them because I wanted to remember. And they felt that that was really important to them, for me to know their kids' names and what's important to them. And we got some great people. I've really been impressed so far with who I've met and the fact that they're willing to come in in the middle of summer. And I've met some children of our people because they didn't have daycare and I said, bring them on in. Or in elementary school, let's meet your kids too. So that was incredibly wonderful. I've also had the privilege of having a meal with both my office staff and then our custodial team. I took each one out separately and we just sat down and we just shared a meal together because I feel like those are some spaces where you can really get to know people at a higher level that's less threatening than behind the principal's office. And let's talk through what makes our school great and what are some of the things we need to tackle together. And I've got a nutritional team set up to do that the first week of in-service because they're not all here yet. So I'll be meeting with all of them as well. One thing that I did tackle right when we first got in, that first week of July, I had a scheduling committee come on in and we discussed the master schedule. When I was in, when Dr. Durfler invited me to come in during the last in-service day, there was some struggles that they were still facing and trying to solve. And I asked them to pause. Let's do some intentional reflection. And I came to the table with some ideas and thought points. Our meeting was scheduled to go from eight to 10. It went from eight to 1:30, but we tackled it. We tackled all of the nuances, all of the struggles that they had faced. And everybody left feeling good and driving to consensus with the schedule that now allowed every single staff member to have an hour of uninterrupted planning time with their PLC every single day. That's something they hadn't had before. We also restructured our response intervention win time. I brought to them the HIR report and I said, if we're not using this HIR report to drive our schedule and how are we going to solve these problems, we're missing the boat. And so we were able to restructure our win time to now have nine educators per grade level, per day, for an hour to help with all of those problems and creates really small intentional groups. Jess has already been a part of those processes along with Carrie Schuer, a reading specialist. And what does that work now look like? And how do we fill in a lot of these gaps that have unintentionally started to be created? So that felt really good. And then what was really nice about having that schedule done ahead of time is that I was able to talk with every person that came in about the schedule and give them a visual so they could ask any additional questions they may or may not have. So that really allowed for everybody to be on the same page right as they left that meeting. Prior to taking my post, any decision that I've made has been based upon the staff survey that I asked all of them to fill out, which was keep, remove, improve, or begin. I got a wonderful response rate from our team. Some put their name on it, some didn't. It was never asked for them to put their name on it. It was sent to everybody, whether it was instructional staff, whether it was custodial staff, it was sent to everybody. What are the things we need to work through? And so any, any feedback, well, there were some themes that kind of came up in that survey, then these are some of the things that we tackled with the schedule or some of our different practices that we're dealing with. Got the privilege of having the leadership team come in today that was identified by their teammates in that survey. Who do you feel would be best representing enough your voice in helping the climate and culture improve at the elementary school? Those individuals all met with me today for two hours and we started to tackle some of those bigger pillars that were identified by the team. And we'll continue to tackle what in-service looks like, how do we support it, how do we continue to rebuild a culture? So that's kind of some of the big list we've been doing. I just started on the first, guys, so I'm sorry if this doesn't seem like a lot. I promise you, I'll have more next month. But some upcoming things we've got, open house, popsicles with the principal, and chalk fest event. What that looks like is I'm outside greeting every single family as they come in, welcoming them with a sugar-free, no fructose corn syrup popsicle, right? Because we want to make sure no red dye forty either, all natural.
Right. No problem.
And some chalk. What the chalk is for is it's to decorate our school grounds with positive messages and pictures. And each family's welcome to have their own square to kind of say how they want the school year to go for their children. So those are kind of the big rocks that we're working on right now and ready, excited for that first day of school with the kids, which is coming up faster than you think.
Crazy that we're talking about this already.
But that's the elementary in that show thus far.
I love the chalk fest, but you know, I mean, it's a fair, it's fair from us to complain about rain, but good luck that it's there still on the first day of school.
I know, but that's why we take a video, we put it on social media and we let people know.
You have a big screen when you walk in, you at least put pictures up and yeah, well, welcome aboard. What a, what a great start that is happening down there at the elementary school. And I feel like we're going to go in a really positive direction. And we were all very excited about hiring such an overachiever, so kind of a disappointment. Looking great.
That's 25 hours worth of work. That's a week worth that you had in the lunches.
Awesome. I know you said that you've only been here since July 1st, but I know you were willing to get your feet wet and thanks for that. And I know you thank the team for coming in on the summer. And I know your contract is a little bit differently as an admin, but also a lot of work to come in in the middle of the summer. So yeah, hitting the ground running with the team is important.
Yes, and building trust.
Yes. And obviously Abby's not here tonight, so, because it is summer, so.
She's unable to be with us.
People do have things, I guess, so. All right. Well, Dr. Durfler, now that you're not at the elementary school, do you have anything as just the administrator?
I think Megan did a great job. Successfully passed the big time.
He did say that in the middle of the staff meeting. And I kind of piped up and I said, Megan's wearing a different jersey.
And you're in the wrong lane, you said.
Wrong way, different, we're crossing over. Crossing over.
Got to kick out everybody that whole time.
We're very sports focused in here because it's the most wonderful time of the year. See, it's a loss.
Mostly by defense.
Oh, come on, Tom. You know that's not.
Vikings and Gophers over there.
You had to do that, didn't you?
You know, all I can say is at least we all just bleed red here. There you go. At least we're all same team red. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And then we will move on to building and grounds update. Larry and Steve?
Today, we had our July meeting of building and grounds. Steve's been on the committee since his arrival on the board a few years back. Larry has joined us here recently. George, six worth, and Ryan Pease make up the other members of that committee. So in brief, just a summary of the tour that we did today. We started here. We checked out the new area for the shot put and the discus. We have some work that needs to be finished there. Finishing the surface where the throws occur is, and this is what the work that needs to be done. This is a matter of grinding it down in-house. It won't be an issue whatsoever. We put a new path in from the intermediate school turnaround to down the left field line of the baseball field, which comes in behind the third base dugout. And that is to get better access to the baseball complex. So you could park on the north side of high school, the tennis court parking lot, or now by the intermediate school, which makes probably three of your shortest walk. We looked at the JV baseball field. There's still some work to be done there. Our excavator came in to fill some spots. The irrigation system is working, so we will be ready to play on that surface next spring, which is always what we intended to have happen. So that will be taking place here next spring. Some of us went up onto the roof. It started to rain. The other person that didn't go was named me. There are some continuing issues that have been going on on the roof of the high school. Larry and Steve can speak to them. They break the weather and you know. We talked about the traffic patterns behind the high school as they relate to baseball. We are going to begin to be more aggressive in our restriction of vehicular traffic behind the high school. There isn't any reason to have to drive in back there other than it's convenient and you can get really close to the field if you're early enough. So there will always be an opportunity to walk through the gate. There will always be a space, unless there's an unforeseen circumstance, where you could walk in through the gate and then walk onto the track, football surface, or to the baseball area. But we need to restrict our vehicular patterns back there because there isn't any spaces to park that really isn't designed for that. So we talked about that. We'll begin addressing that here in the next couple of weeks. Then we trekked over to the elementary school. There was a lake every single time that it rained that formed underneath the playground equipment. And as I've said before, you're going to tell 84K kids not to run into that water. That's not going to work. So we have, I believe, successfully mitigated that. This week will probably tell us if we have, because we're going to get a bunch of rains due to the site. And hopefully, we won't have water in that area. And then we ended our tour over at the old track and football surface. And we're going to begin that conversation in this upcoming school year as to what that facility needs to look like as we move forward, now that we're on our feet and moving forward with all of our sports with our new complex. And that's just my speech. And I'll turn it over to Larry and Steve and they can chime in with any of their thoughts or questions that they may have.
Yeah, Larry, you're welcome. You started.
As a new board member, I'm just really impressed with our facilities. They're awesome. As Sean mentioned, there are a few issues ongoing. You know, anytime you have a campus this size, I suspect there will always be something, there'll always be something going on. But I really got a chance to meet George and I really feel like he and Sean have a very good handle on what's going on out there. I'm just really impressed. We've got some beautiful facilities and it's very exciting.
Yeah, the tour was great. Having been on the roof before, it's a massive change from what was there to what's there now. And like Larry said, there are some issues yet that are being dealt with, but I have confidence that George will tackle them because that's just who George is. So nothing horrible to report, all good stuff.
Is the roof issues being handled within our referendum money? That, I mean, because usually they're all, that's.
It's all contracted work that was contracted prior to the, in essence, the closing note of the books of the referendum. All of that's been accounted for. And it isn't anything catastrophic. It's this 1976 building which has been addressed and then some in regards to its issues. But there's just a few remaining things that we're seeking to address. Maybe you have more to say on that, but I think we're worried.
Some of it's underneath the, you know, the warranty or the 11-month walkthrough timeframe of, hey, we noticed this, we noticed that.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm wondering if that's just to make sure like that's not going to be an additional cost.
It will not be new dollars.
And that's, to say that again, 1976, that means next year the high school is 50 years old. If you have a roof that's 50 years old, you're probably going to have some issues that need to be dealt with. And we just dealt with a whole bunch of it. There's still something we got to address. A long time, 50 years.
Flat roof in Wisconsin.
Yeah. Not good. So that's building and grounds.
All right. Any other questions for community members or Dr. Durkler on building and grounds? No? All right, moving on. John, you're up with the 25, 26 budget again.
Yeah, it's, this is more as it relates to the state budget. We just wanted to again kind of, you know, talk in a public setting, in a public forum about kind of what did and didn't transpire with the state biennial budget. And I'll preface this by saying we don't exactly know just how it may or may not impact the school district of Amory just yet. And we're still kind of waiting on our partners to kind of help us figure that out. In essence, you know, there's, I would encourage you to read it if you want. DPI did a publication that basically outlined the four different, or really three, what the ask was from the agency or from DPI, what the governor's ask was, and what the joint committee on financing. What you'll see is it's more frustrating than it is anything because the line that you get sick of seeing the entire time is essentially, I'll just read it straight from here. Remove from consideration and deny the governor's request are the two things that you see on there. So what did we end up with that actually impacts us here? Only one thing, and that's just an increase from a roughly 30% special education categorical reimbursement to a roughly 42% categorical special education reimbursement in fiscal year '26, up to 45% in fiscal year '27. Outside of that, really it's kind of a smattering of other things that kind of come and go. High-cost special education claims, which, you know, can impact some years, can and won't other years. Typically, it hasn't had any major impact as far as tipping the needle forward. The reason why it's hard for me, for us to say exactly right now how it's going to impact us is essentially just because even though you're increasing the state contribution for special education, we still have to overcome this big ugly bear that's called maintenance of effort. And so the big brains at DPI and everyone are still trying to figure out exactly how we can put that into the budget. But essentially, for planning purposes, there is no additional funding coming from the state this year.
And do we know if we're going to be, if there's going to be not just no additional, but are we going to lose any state funding this year? Do we know that yet?
Our state aid has already been reduced per the aid estimate. Now, the aid estimate that they release every year on July 15th is just that. It's an estimate and it's based off of unaudited, incomplete information. So there usually is a little bit of give and take on there. You know, a couple of the more kind of eyebrow raising ones is simply when you look through the list of the 421 school districts in Wisconsin, most of middle border conferences in the same position we are, where we're getting a reduction in state aid, which means an increase in property taxes, unfortunately. So the original ask from the governor's office and from DPI was to shift more of the burden on to the state and off of the taxpayers. And I think that's ultimately kind of the biggest challenge that we're going to face is not so much a budgetary shortfall because that's not what's happening, but simply just having to have these conversations in regards to property taxes ultimately.
But again, for the public, nothing we can control.
We can't control a single bit of it, no. No, it is nothing that we are doing or not doing that is leading to this. We're doing our part.
Is it too late for the public to have their voices?
Unfortunately, it is, yep. It's been adopted and signed. So now, and again, you know, you can say what you want about biennial budgets versus annual budgets and feasibility and all that sort of thing, but we're married to it for two years unless there is a overwhelming public support for a last-minute amendment. And I'm not even sure what the legalities of are that, if there's a special session or anything like that, so.
So how does that increase in property taxes happen? How does that get applied to the taxpayer?
Well, essentially, you know, there's multiple factors at play when it comes to property taxes. The first one and biggest one is what's called equalized property value of your area. And that's what I think Amory has seen over the course of the last really several years.
The last three years have been 15%, 17%, 19% increase.
And which means you're more property rich is what that means. Correct. And the hard part with using equalized property value as an economic indicator for an area is that there's 11 municipalities that make up the school district of Amory. And if five of them double in their assessed property value from the previous year, but five of them go down and one of them stays the same, you won't see an actual decrease in your property taxes. You'll see an increase again. So it's really hard. Yeah, it's kind of a hard conversation because there's so many different levels to it. But essentially, last year we got $325 additional funding per pupil from the state. This year, they've shifted that burden on to the taxpayers. So if there's going to be an increase, it's going to be because of that.
Any other questions for John?
And the way schools have been funded hasn't dramatically changed for how many years?
32 since 1993, so.
We're living with some very adequate formulas.
Correct. And again, and I would, you know, I would welcome any member of the public or anybody to call and have a conversation. There's some wonderful presentations out there. The one that is truly, I think, the most shocking and damning is the fact, is just one simple graph that shows where we are in per pupil spending as it relates to if we had stayed married to inflation. And that number's $3,300. So we're $3,300 per pupil behind where we would have been had we not gotten separated from inflationary spending back in 2009, 2010. So that means that even if they were to increase per pupil spending by $1,000, well, that's fantastic. That would have a huge impact on us, but that's still $2,300 behind where we should be. And that's what you see in a lot of states that have kind of split us off from inflation. So it's not cheaper for us just because we're a school. I think is the important part.
Yeah, just the cost of doing business and keeping the, keeping the lights on. And it was something that April and I were talking about tonight when we were going through the vouchers of, you know, an electric bill of what it is. And it's like, you just, I mean, I get it that everybody else's rates increase in their own home too, but it's astronomical what it takes to run a building, so.
And that's even, that's, I mean, we're fully LED now. George has implemented efficiencies like you wouldn't believe to make us cheaper. And yet our electric bill still goes up. I think sometimes it gives George a little bit of an aneurysm, but.
We feel that, watch it out. All right, any other questions for John right now? I'm sure this isn't the last time we'll be hearing about this, so.
Nope, we'll be ringing the budget back again next month.
Yep. All right. On to action items then. Dr. Durkler?
So this is the second reading. We received some feedback from high school guidance who had a little bit of clarity and so forth in regards to this policy. So the changes that you see in red, that's where they come from. So we struck out the 10th grade students with specific exceptions. And Josh, please chime in if you feel differently on any of these. That simply doesn't happen, so that was removed. The change to the cost paragraph, so it now reads tuition and book costs for approved courses are covered by both programs, but there may be additional fees or costs not covered for which student is responsible. If a student feels the course, they are responsible for paying the cost of tuition and books for that course.
Just a side note, but sometimes like a course might be a computer-based course or some sort of high-tech graphics where they need on like a really souped-up computer to be able to run those programs. We don't provide that. If they want to sign up for the course, it's their responsibility to make sure they have a computer that's, because like our Chromebooks that we provide don't have, actually, most of the computers sitting in front of the staff today wouldn't have enough to run those programs. So that'd be another example. You're certainly welcome to take the course, but you'll have to come up with something like.
Couple of other changes underneath admission. It reads even if a student applies and is approved by the Board of Education, a college can still deny the course if the student does not meet the admissions requirements, if there is no space in the course, or if the college wishes to exercise their right to limit credits for enrollment. Grading, it's on a four-point scale. And it reads they will transfer to the student's high school transcript and will impact their GPA. And lastly, informational sessions, we simply don't do that. So those are the changes to the second reading of the DCCPSCN. They needed more acronyms. There are some more for you. Policy. Even if you wanted to approve it, you make the motion to do this.
I will make a motion to approve the early college credit program. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the early college credit program, Start College Now revised policy with the changes that's presented. Is there any discussion?
Josh, how many students take advantage of this approximately?
I would say any given spring or fall, I would say somewhere in the vicinity of eight to 14 probably per semester. Definitely growing. Sometimes a kid will just take one class. Some kids maximize it to a really, get, or kid-by-kid basis.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving the early college credit program, Start College Now policy language changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. The early college credit program, Start College Now policy language update is approved. Okay, moving on to a hazardous mitigation plan. Dr. Durkler?
Polk County contacted George and I and they need us in other Polk County school districts to pass a resolution, which in essence says that we would lend our assistance in light of a hazardous event. And the way they describe that is your typical situation of a tornado or tornadic activity, a cataclysmic snowstorm, a flood, any of those types of events. If something like that occurred, we would provide assistance in regards to shelter, a cooling spot, a warming spot, a sheltering spot. And they would ask us, because most places within Polk County just don't have a large enough venue to situate a large number of people on a moment's notice. This is likely something that would never occur. I would hope that it would never occur, but it could. And there is a 500-page document that I waded through here over the course of the last week that Polk County has put together. And we are in there along with the other Polk County school districts agreeing to lend our assistance if needed. So that's in essence what this resolution states. And I guess no further than recent events. If you don't think it can happen, it certainly can.
Is it just about use of building and grounds or does it include use of staff?
Doesn't include use of staff.
Food service.
My haunch is if they did use our grounds, our buildings, our services, we would probably end up having some of our staff lend assistance to, but it doesn't say that in the plan.
I don't think we could require our staff to do that, but I would assume, I mean, our staff is pretty great and I would assume that many of them would volunteer their time and efforts in order to help mitigate any catastrophes.
We had a situation where we had to house a bunch of people and serve them food. Our, our school nutrition staff would come in at moments. They wouldn't ask for a thing.
Yeah, I mean, we saw what they did stepping up during COVID and getting food to families.
Thousands of meals.
It was, we didn't have to ask. It was, we're fortunate enough that we have staff that are very self-driven and are very willing to help, so.
Again, hopefully this will never be an issue, but you never know.
Is this a renewal or is this something new?
We've never done this before.
Okay, so they have authored a new plan. It's a five-year plan. So maybe this is something they have never authored before.
I don't think they've ever added to this scale. They called up a number of years ago and just kind of verbal, if we ever have.
Yeah, it didn't look like this. This is really formal.
I remember it because it was when the high school was getting worked on. So we graciously offered the middle school gym free catastrophic situation.
Yeah, it's never been this formal.
Tom is going to entertain them all in the gym.
I think this comes down from some legislation though of having counties for preparedness plans. And so I think this comes down from federal, state, and then now, because you all have to have this preparedness plan. So I think this is probably part of their implementation of getting this done, so.
And our Polk County neighboring school districts that have facilities that can be of help are all in there too. I mean, it was listed alphabetically and our neighbors were there too, some of them, not all.
I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to be part of this.
So I would recommend that we be a part of it.
I would vote for approval.
Larry, is there a second to approve the resolution for the hazardous mitigation plan? Steve?
Yes.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the resolution for the all hazardous mitigation plan for the school. It's not necessarily for the school district of Amory, but it's for the county, including the school districts of Amory. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the hazardous mitigation plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying no. Good choice. Motion passed. The resolution passes. Tell the county, bring on in.
Hope it never happens.
Hope it never happens. All right, and then moving on then to the 25, 26 student academic standards. Jess?
This is an annual notice where you adopt the standards that we're presenting to you today to ensure that we are meeting the requirements, but also that we have rigorous academics for our students. So I will read the annual notice. School district of Amory has a responsibility for maintaining a minimum program of instruction guaranteed by the Wisconsin State Statute 118.30 and for initiating improvements beyond that minimum. The relevant statutes encompass standards in mathematics, science, reading, writing, geography and history. Professional staff under the direction, under the direction and supervision of the curriculum coordinator are delegated the responsibility for developing curriculum changes and additions. The school board approves the adoption of pupil academic standards on an annual basis, which is where we are tonight. The school district of Amory establishes standards and aligns our curriculum instruction. School district of Amory K-12 English, Language Arts and Mathematics are based upon the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards, which do align with the Common Core State Standards. All other program areas are based upon the most current Wisconsin Model Academic Standards in addition to the national standards and GSS, College Career and Civic Life C3 framework for social studies standards and Wisconsin Career and Readiness Standards. The following pages are just more informational. This is a graphic from the DPI. And so this just drives what is the relationship between the standards and what we are doing here. So Wisconsin academic standards specify what students should know and be able to do in the classroom. They serve as goals for all of our teachers for teaching and learning. Setting high standards enables our students, parents, educators and citizens to know what students should learn when they leave a grade level. Finally, in Wisconsin, all state standards serve as a model locally. Elected school boards adopt model academic standards in each subject area to best serve our local community. I always like to share why our academic standard is important. Really is to ensure that all of our students have equal access to high-quality educational programs. Clear statements about what our students must know and be able to do are essential and making sure that our schools offer opportunities for all schools and for all students to make sure that they have the knowledge and skills that are necessary just beyond the classroom as well. So that really drives what we're doing, why we're doing this is really big. And it moves into the next, which is guiding principles. When we're looking at curriculum, we're obviously ensuring that it aligns with the standards and that we have high rigor's goals that are set for all of our students when they finish a grade level. When looking at standards, we identify essential standards, which then coordinates with the curriculum guiding principles for myself and our educators is just making sure that every student has a right to learn. Instruction is rigorous and relevant, K-12. We are using purposeful assessments, that's local and state assessments, to drive our instruction and learning. Learning is a collaborative responsibility with all staff members within the school district of Amory. Our students are here to learn. We acknowledge that students bring strengths and experiences to learning, so it comes with a different background. So making sure that we're connecting with our kids and being collaborative. And then finally, that we are fostering responsive environments that engage our learners, so making sure that they feel valued. What they bring to us, we build upon that, making sure that they feel like they belong. So those are our guiding principles when identifying our standards and also choosing our curriculums. The next is actually a graphic from the DPI, so this is something that we, that we move through continuously is phase one, which we have a solid foundation of, is how, how do the standards fit in our coursework? We are always going between phase two and phase three each year with looking at new curriculum. So when we consider a new curriculum, we're making sure that it aligns for essential standards. We're making sure that the assessments align with our outcomes. And then finally, phase three, which always is the goal of standards and curriculum, is making sure that we are assessing and we are continuing our instruction. So this is just a nice visual to show the phases of that roll out. The next is our program alignment, so this is informational for you. Our ELA in mathematics, we follow the Wisconsin academic standards. Our science is Wisconsin Model Academic and NGSS, is what they're called. Social studies, we follow the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards and the C3 Framework for Standards. Art, music, fire, health and CTE all follow the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards and Wisconsin Career Readiness Standards and National Standards as well. The final is more information, so I work with Tracy just to establish a curriculum instruction page, so that is new to our district. So when you go to our district website, you will actually see under district, it's curriculum instruction page. And that's been a really nice addition, I believe, to our website. It, it lays out what are we doing directly in curriculum and instruction. So if any parent wanted to know, what are we teaching, what's our guiding principles? That's where you could find everything, so you'll see on the left, the curriculum instruction page. You'll also see under that is the Wisconsin Reds and Act 20, so per Act 20, we do have to have several pieces of information living out on our website, so that's where you would also find it now. And then our curriculum standards is tied there as well as our school-wide Title I program. So this is more informational for anyone watching this, if you wanted to know where our standards live, where does Act 20 documentation live? And then where does our Title I program live as well, it will be under that curriculum instruction page as well.
I'm sure this is a big addition and undertaking to the website. And I, I hope it's received very positively in the community so that, you know, parents do have that transparency of what's being taught in, in school and what they feel comfortable with. So thanks for doing that, I'm sure that was a, a big undertaking, even though short timer in the room was retired, thank you very much.
She stands ready to make the updates.
It really is, it's a beautiful addition to our, to our website, it really is for anyone that wants to know what are we doing to support readers and to support learners. It really is a great spot to be able to start and have a deal from there and I'd be happy to answer any other questions. But of course, I love curriculum instruction and reading, so I was really excited to get this up and running and have everything housed there.
We're glad that you love that.
I do.
Is there any questions for Justin, the 2526 student academic standards and how we navigate them?
I, I wouldn't have a question.
Sure.
I don't, I'm not even sure how to ask this question, but he keeps talking about, you know, Wisconsin standards. How do, how does Wisconsin compare nationwide, or are they all very similar?
Tom wants to take it, so I'm gonna let him.
Tom likes this question.
He's so good. Such a good question, Larry.
We were one of the very first states to come through with Wisconsin standards 25, 30 years ago, and they came about with the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards. There were several states that were working together that were pretty much high achievers in the country. The when they came through with like the, the national standards, they actually based it off of the Wisconsin standards along with two or three other states. And so I know that if you were to take a look at at the national standards and, and the Wisconsin standards, it's really hard to tell much difference. And so basically, they're, they're really based off of that. And then I know that got people, some people excited about, you know, there's these national standards and they kind of felt like maybe the federal government had come through. But in all honesty, they were set up by the Wisconsin Governors Association, so the 50 governors and basically like the 50 state superintendents came forward and drafted those standards. And they used Wisconsin, Minnesota and a couple of other states as the model for it. And so basically, and I know that got some people excited because many states didn't have standards, they didn't have any standards at all. And I got people saying, well, why is the government telling us what to do? And it wasn't really the federal government. They, they're called national standards because it was adopted nationally, but it was adopted by the state associations, the governors and their councils. And so basically, the, the standards that majority of the state is using were modeled off of what Wisconsin and some of the other leaders were doing. So it's that kind of, yeah, very interesting.
And there's, there's lots of standards for the state, but locally, we kind of pick still at the, at this local district level, we pick what of those standards we really want to focus on? Or when we pick curriculums, sometimes we make sure that everything that we're teaching in those curriculums fit into those Wisconsin standards. So a lot of times, if you're, if you're a teacher and you are creating lesson plans, that lesson plan has to reference a, a Wisconsin standard to be, you know, legal to be taught, you know, or to be ethical to be taught and approved, so. But it's, it's a, it was a great question.
So we break, we break through the standards, what are, what are, what are nice to know, what are should knows, what are absolutely vital or essential standards? And so we base the essential standards as the driving core of what we want to make sure we're doing. Like you can't get through this grade level in this class if you cannot master it. And we drill down until they master it. And that comes back to a lot of these intervention groups and reteaches and to make sure that you know, it isn't just, well, you got exposed to it, you got, you didn't do so, like a D move on. No, they have to show their mastery, so it's repetitive until we continue to show that kids are, are making the growth that is necessary.
And I presume our goal would be to surpass these standards?
Well, yeah, well, the standards, we're just saying, here's what kids need to know. And so then we, like even like our, when we go through and we grade students based off of like standards-based grading, we say, here's the mastery, but then they can move on beyond mastery and show that, they show they have a high-level exemplary learning. And so we're certainly trying to, to work with kids in that way. So an example, if you're working in a class and you're working on a specific standard and the teachers are using assessments and interim and common course assessments to sit there and say, where are the kids at? Then they're going to respond to how well the kids are learning and how well the kids are showing they're doing. So then if kids are struggling, they may move to an intervention time while other kids move to an extension. If they already showed they learned it, then they go on and do extensive things, extensions to kind of get beyond mastery while we're working with the other kids. And so it takes a lot of teamwork, it takes a lot of collaboration. So I may have my normal class of students and I give an assessment and my neighbor does the same. Okay, tomorrow, I'm going to take all the kids that didn't get it, I'm going to reteach this topic to those. You take all those that got it and you push them forward to even higher level things. And so it's a, it's a teamwork, it takes an entire school to take that standard kid by kid, skill by skill, for growth for everybody.
When we talk about a standard, Larry, and maybe this is, I'm sensing a little bit of confusion, is that a standard, I think Justin must have picked up on it too there, but a standard, when we talk about a standard, it says like a student must be able to demonstrate that they know.
Competency.
Yeah, like how their, their multiplication tables, zero through five. So that's a standard, or zero through 10, so that's the standard. So it's not the, the system, the criteria of how well do they meet, that that's the standard. And then we go through standards of how well do they understand that? So that was where like kind of the basic minimum proficient advance comes in. So those are a standard of grading versus a standard of knowledge concept. So that, the, the knowledge concept, that's what these are talking about, is the concept. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And in addition to that, the DPI does relook at the standards, often they relooked at their math standards in 2021 and there were some, some changes to the standards, so then we then look at those changes to the standards. And we say, well, with the changes the DPI made, does that impact us? Do I need to relook at our essential standards? You know, what is the scaffolding of what we're doing? A lot of times, standards are introduced in a lower level grade, maybe first grade, but it's also a standard that's built upon for second grade and then built upon for third, right? So the concepts get higher and the standard builds off of itself, so.
Have we heard about any changes coming down through standards of any, like social studies, curriculum standards, any of those things?
Well, social studies, they, they, they sort of came out and said, this is the alignment that we want to see.
Scope and sequence came out.
Sequence, and so we were teaching geography in eighth grade and US history in sixth grade, but majority of the districts weren't out, so they said, no, we want you to move to this. So what it made us do is we said, okay, we're going to have to teach geography multiple grade levels and then, and then move history to eighth grade. But you can't just do it right away because these kids need to get the geography. So we had to like double teach geography for a couple of years and then I've moved teachers around. So we're constantly on top of it, but one little change trickles down to like a three, four-year process.
An epic change is happening this year, so the DPI did do a new recommendation of social studies, scope and sequence. And so what was being taught in sixth grade, after we got the recommendation, was pushed down to fifth. What was being taught in fifth, has been pushed down to fourth. So it's this big scaffolding that really doesn't affect the elementary a lot, but it greatly affected the middle and intermediate school. And so all of a sudden, things that we were teaching older are being pushed down. Tom's really had to rearrange and he's got some great teachers that are going to be double teaching things to be able to sure that next year we're on track. A big reason of why we follow the recommendations of the DPI is, let's say, we get a student from a local district that comes to us. If we're not following that recommendation, and most districts are, this student may miss geography or, you know, a certain class in social studies because we're not following the recommendation. So it, it's been a big change, we've navigated that over the last year, that'll be implemented this year going into the fall.
And I, and I think to your point, Justin, even though this one might not affect the elementary school, I still feel like because of those, the bars have been moved so much like that, that we've really been asking our kids to learn to, to already know things that would have normally been taught in kindergarten, but they're expected to know those things coming into kindergarten because things have been pushed so far down. So I, it's always good to keep that in mind when we're looking at assessments of our kids. Any more questions for Justin on the student academic standards? Annual notice? And I think we just need to approve that this was, that this, that this is the standards that we're going to go with for the 2526, that we're going to go ahead and approve the academic standards annual notice. Do I have a motion to accept that?
So.
Larry, is there a second?
Second.
April? It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the 2526 annual notice of student academic standards. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, student academic standards annual notice for 2526 has approved, thank you. All right, and then moving on to the 2526 extracurricular contracts, Mr. Dirkler?
So back in May, you did contracts for certified staff, support staff, administrative staff. The next phase of that is here in July, and that is your extracurricular contracts for coaches and other advisors. And you'll see there the green sheet and the blue sheet has what positions, the amounts and the folks that are in those positions, so you would be approving those extra seat contracts for those individuals. There are openings. Dylan Johnson, our new athletic director, his charge is to fill the existing openings. And he is well aware of that. So if you see a job you're interested in applying for, school board members can apply to it.
Do you dance team coach?
What, Steve?
Yeah.
Dance team coach, you have to do a pro bono though.
Norwegian. Norwegians don't dance, come on, not this Norwegian.
Well, I'm sure there's somebody out there who wants the job. A couple volleyball coaches, we got a dance team coach up, we've got a head softball coach, a JV softball coach and a track assistant coach.
There you go.
Open, lots of athletics, again, heavy athletics. All right, just, just putting it out there, anybody that's listening. Do I have a motion to approve the athletic contracts and the, and then the activity contracts as well for 2526?
Make that motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Gwen? It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the 2526 athletic contracts and the 2526 activity contracts as presented. Is there any discussion? April says get a dance team coach, now, now? Anything? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, the 2526 athletic contracts and activity contracts are approved as presented. Donations to the district?
We have a donation to the district from Jen Youth and that is for a flag football kit. Thank you to Jen Youth and NFL Flag in School for awarding the district a grant for a free flag football kit. That's our donation.
Very cool.
Make the motion to accept the donation.
Is there a second? Gwen? It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the flag football kit from Jen Youth with many thanks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of accepting the donation of the flag football kit, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, please signify by saying no. Yeah, I don't know why you wouldn't get this, especially football, so that's pretty awesome, thanks. Motion's approved for the donation of the flag football kit. And off to personnel action.
We have new employment contracts for Diane Ammons, a special ed teacher, long-term sub. Paul Enslin, Health Occupations Students of America Advisor. Michelle Fransek, Middle School Track Assistant Coach. Anna Ganji, High School English Teacher, long-term sub. Karen Angie, also in Health Occupations Students as an advisor. Eva Garas, Clubhouse Assistant Teacher. Kendrick Gunther, van driver. Kimberly Helpney, Special Ed Teacher. Rourke Langer, Special Ed Teacher. Gwen Otto, Regular Ed Para Educator. William Folsen, School Nutrition Food Server. Amanda Rowling, Middle School Track Head Coach. Diane Tryon, Clubhouse Assistant Teacher. A reassignment of Peyton Benny from Clubhouse Childcare to a Special Ed Para Physician. Resignations for Lexus Merrick, Special Ed Teacher. Leah Rasmussen, Seventh Grade Volleyball Coach. And Jordan Beisner, Clubhouse Assistant Director.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action as presented?
I will make that motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Larry, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the personnel action as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, personnel action is approved as presented. Unless Tracy has something wild to say, I don't think we have any community comments since there's nobody left here in the room. So I guess, and where there's no need to go back into closed session tonight. And so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Steve's going camping, he, he would like to get out of here, is there a second? April, I don't know, I don't think April's going camping, if she's got something else to do. She'd be a wimp.
This is a hot cabin.
That's not camping.
That's clamping. It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, adjourned.